Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Course Commission to Order. The date is May 3rd, 2023, and the time is 7:00. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Ally?
Ally McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Jim Palmy.
Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
At this time, the consideration of the minutes of the meeting of April 5th. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? Erin, I've got some comments. You, you, let me just see. No, not in the minutes. It's in the, one of the applications. I think the minutes are all right. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't find anything. Okay. Any concerns, any issues with the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, be accepted as submitted.
Is your second?
Second.
Motion made, and any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Abstain.
Jeff?
Abstain.
Jimmy, you weren't here either, right? Ally?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now, the, the, all the regular members of the commission are here tonight. They will be the voting members of the, of the meeting. Okay, oh, business. Application A18 12.2, 32 Barnes Road, bond release, Roland Industry.
That's not ready.
What'd you say?
That's not ready, sorry.
Okay. All right. Eighty-six, uh, application, A23 2.2, 86 Barnes Road, North Main Street. Yes, sir. We have an easel up here.
Thank you.
Leave it there. It works better right there.
You got it.
And you can use the mic to go up to that point.
Good evening. My name is Zach Georgina. I am the project engineer working on 86 Barnes Road for Giuliano Associates located at 405 Main Street in Wallingford. Currently, 86 Barnes Road is a 3.03 acre parcel that has been left barren for quite some time. It has a variety of field brush in various emerging states, a wetland located along the east side of the property, along North Main Street extension, and a existing waterway off the property to the north. This waterway, as I'm sure this commission is aware, has a bit of a history with flooding and development through the movie theater and such previously. The applicant happens to be the owner of the property adjacent to this property and in the past worked with the town to solve this problem by repairing and maintaining that waterway. So, just to walk you through real quick soil types, the majority of the site, subterranean wise, is a penwood loam, sandy, little bit of silts, some clays, not a lot. But that is this in green location here. The remainder of the site is essentially just its turned industrial fill that has been brought in and through the development of North Main Street extension, as well as the movie theater plaza property has been turned, and there's not much there in terms of native material. This was confirmed through deep test pits, deep test pits located throughout the site that, once you dig down through the top soil here that has been turned over the years, we are looking at a nice penwood sand underneath that has a very good infiltration rate. So, moving on to what we're proposing to do here. The applicant is looking to turn this site into a five-building self-storage facility. It's increasing the impervious by approximately 30,000 square feet. This will be, as I said, five single-story, single-story self-storage units and associated drive aisles and parking. The intent of our stormwater plan here, as we are increasing the impervious a lot, which requires us to offset, is to infiltrate all of the water that is going to be hitting the impervious surfaces at it. Due to the material, we quite literally are just collecting everything that hits buildings, pavement, you name it, that's not pervious, and we are going to be storing it on-site through concrete galleys and infiltrating that to prevent any increase in runoff and not divert any additional flows into the existing stream to the north. This site, this site does, as I said, have a wetland along North Main Street extension. As it is uphill from our proposal, we will, we are looking to encroach slightly towards it into the upland review area, but we don't anticipate long-term any impacts on this wetland as it is up hydraulic gradient from us. So, water that's feeding this should still remain feeding it, and there shouldn't be any issue with our development negatively impacting the wetland itself. Like I said, in terms of our development plan, we are looking to essentially add a entrance to Barnes Road. Currently, the site has a continuous curbing all the way around it, so we will be needing a curb cut to enter into our property. We're looking to do that from Barnes Road itself. Upon entering, we're looking to have circular traffic around the entire site, allowing access to both sides of the three smaller facilities and on one side of the two larger facilities for self-storage. This location will not be having any sewer or water provided to it. It's just an electrical draw. There's no additional facilities. The traffic impact incredibly minor.
This is wetlands, remember it.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right. Just wanted to give a full scope of what we were looking at here. But the goal of this is to minimize our impact. We are going to be in the upland review area with some drive aisle north, towards the north. We are going to be impacting approximately 3,000 square feet of that upland review area. Other than that, like I said, that water is going to be infiltrated on-site instead of directed towards the wetlands.
What are you doing about rip wrapping the brook?
Presently, the brook is not currently on our property, but it has been previously rip wrapped by the applicant. I know part of the history here, part of the history here was the previous owner of the parcel in question, 86 Barnes Road, was not forthcoming in helping the town during previous flooding events and fixing that brook. I know Mr. Pareda is looking at the benefits of having both of these and his willingness to work with the town historically to maintain that brook and watch out for any erosion, fallen logs, what have you. Now that he owns both properties, he'll be able to more readily maintain that for the town.
Is the Wallingford Water Department's going to allow you to do direct discharge into the soil?
Yes. So, essentially with this site, we are limiting the storage to not, completely non-toxic, non-corrosive materials. This will be deed restricted as such, so it'll just be furniture and such. Due to the low, low nature of this material, we will be using an isolator unit to collect any trash or silt that would be collected in here, and dilution's the solution. The sheer volume of water we're going to be pouring in this is going to be a non-issue in terms of water, water quality.
When you have multiple rental units like that, who's going to monitor what's coming in and out of those units?
Generally speaking, that would fall on the owner and operator. Liability-wise, if there was to be an issue, it would be on them, and then to the sub, the present subtenant that was in violation of the lease as well from a legal standpoint.
Is there documentation for the first section that's already been built?
I, I'm not currently aware. I know that it does, it predates myself in the company. I'm not sure, historically speaking, what's on the deed for that, for the other facility.
Debbie?
No comment.
Mike?
No comments.
Jeff?
Do you have a plan with snow removal?
We do. Thank, thank you very much, we do. If I can flip back here to sheet number two. So, in terms of snow removal, again, we're looking to try and keep as much water that falls on the site on the site. We are, have made room varying from about eight feet to 15 feet along the front side of the property between the fence and the curbing. That snow will be essentially stockpiled there and allowed to naturally melt, infiltrating into the soil and slowly sheet flowing towards Barnes Road and actually just Barnes Road because there's a slight swale here in terms of grating. But as we all know, snow melt is fairly minor over time, and this water was currently sheet flowing in that direction anyway.
Jimmy?
Are the running restrictions?
I think you were better before.
Is your microphone working, please?
It's working, I think, now?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any restrictions for salting during ice conditions in the winter?
Not presently. If the commission feels that that is something they're actively concerned with, we can definitely look into that, but for the most part, again, dilution's the solution in terms of water volume, and we don't see a lot of these self-storage units being particularly heavy users of, of salt. It's a lot of, you plow, you remove, and then because it's all asphalt, it's going to bake off in the sun fairly quickly in terms of icing problems.
Okay, and do you anticipate needing any sand during the winter season to be used there?
So, sand is definitely a larger possibility. I do see that used in my professional experience with that. However, or not however, to address that, we have included a stormwater maintenance plan in our most recent revision, which addresses biannual cleaning of the catch basins, and our proposed stormwater facility itself will have an isolator row with two manholes access for regular cleaning as proposed in the maintenance schedule.
Okay. I didn't hear you quite well. I know you're talking about maintenance of catch basins. Is those, are they hooded catch basins? Are they oil-water separator, grit separators, or just open galleys?
So, the, the catch, sorry, if the mic wasn't close enough. The catch basins themselves will just be standard catch basins connected with a pipe network. The infiltration system is going to feature an isolator row, which is essentially a concrete galleys wrapped in a geofabric so that you don't get any silts or trash being transported further in, allowing for easy cleaning and inspection annually.
The filter fabric is going to filter the water going in the galley.
So, water, essentially, water will be collected in the catch basins, directed by the pipe network to the galley system. The first row of the galleys is this isolator unit that prevents any silts or other fine materials, trash, what have you, from going further into the galley system to allow for cleanup. So, water would enter, water filters through this fabric into the rest of the system, and any trash or sediment deposits is kept in the system to allow it to be cleaned up on that annual basis.
What kind of cut and fills you're going to have out there?
Say again?
What kind of cut and fills?
Mostly the site's fairly neutral. We're looking at a long North Main Street extension, cutting. We'll be using the back of this building essentially to act as a retaining wall to maintain as much of the natural grade as we get closer to North Main Street and the wetland. On the other side, we will be building up, actually, let me, if I jumped to the correct sheet. There we go. So, our largest cuts are over in this area right here where we'll be moving about four feet of material in terms of height and building up over on the west side where we're going from essentially 90, currently 94 elevation up to an 86. So, we're looking at putting four feet on one side, removing four foot on the other side, so a fairly balanced operation.
So, there shouldn't be any square footage of fill coming in or going out?
Completely negligible. Based on our calculations, and again, once you get into a site and you start pulling out rocks or what have you, things change slightly, but we're looking at a, that it should be a net neutral site.
Erin, you got any comments at this time?
The application I handed out tonight, the revised application, the, which is in front of you, it's the site plan that Zach is going over, and the stormwater management plan, excuse me, and a second letter from the wetland scientist, David Lord. All that just came out tonight. They handed it in on Monday, so it hasn't been reviewed by staff.
So, at this point, you don't have any comments other than he handed in a new report or new application?
I did glance at, I did read David Lord's wetland report, and I'm glad he did that. He clarified a bunch of information I wanted clarified, so that's good. The number one thing he clarified, well, he emphasized how churned up the, the site was all over. The wetlands have been altered, the whole site has been altered. So, the whole site, he considers u-dorphins fill the majority of the site, and the wetlands he considers aquins. Those are basically wetlands that have been altered over time. So, and he cleared up how that little wetland in the front is draining. It, it just, the water comes in from the sky and it just drains. There's no magic, it doesn't flow out or in or out or off the road or anything like that. So, but what I, the commission, what I would ask the commission to do tonight is to request an extension of the applicant so we can move to the next month.
All right. Before I get to that, though, that, I think you need with Erin to address that brook a little bit further. You say it's off your property, but by the same token, it's a common ownership. And the concept that you're going to work with the town to maintain it, I don't know if it needs rip wrap. I don't, I know previous applications, it was going to get rip wrapped, not by your, not by the previous owner, but other people, and the previous owner refused rip wrap. So, I think you need to review that with Erin on that, on that brook.
If I may just adjust, it is presently rip wrapped, and that rip wrap was installed by the applicant, who is the current owner of, why am I drawing a blank on this address?
That, that.
950, that it is presently rip wrapped.
It is probably, not by the previous owner of 86, but by a previous owner of North Main Street, by the present owner of North.
Correct.
All right.
If I could clarify, Chairman, do you want, do you want me to assess if it needs further rip wrap, or what are the?
Yes, see if it's, see what it needs. Maybe it's fine.
Yeah, as I recall from that years ago, the person who owned that.
Mezzi.
Mezzi refused to allow the person to the north to get near his property. He was very belligerent, and we kept saying to him, it's a perfect opportunity to address the issues at this time. The answer was a flat? No, absolutely no. So, it's fortunate, excuse me, I think it's very fortunate that the owner that was willing to do it, do it in the beginning is present now to take over what he was going to do originally, but now he has the opportunity to do it properly without this, the objection of the neighbor that was originally there.
It may be fine.
Absolutely. We have no idea because it was never properly rip wrapped, because it wasn't allowed to be. Now you can address it if you, you own it.
It was never brought before the commission either, so we don't know what condition it's.
We don't know, and I think that we need that extended time to put the, the final work on this.
Okay to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that, that whole thing has changed and moved and twisted and turned. That 90-degree bend at the, at the end behind the movie theaters is a problem. The problem starts up in Barnes Park North where one of the retention ponds up there silted in, lack of maintenance, and it turned into a wetland, and then the state says you can't turn it back into a retention pond. It's all those little things that have happened over the years.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you started this application back in March, I believe.
That is correct.
So, you're, we're running out of time to work on this application, therefore, you need to grant us an extension of time.
We are absolutely willing to grant you that extension of time.
Do you, do you have that? They don't need to give you a letter tonight, do they?
I, I have a letter prepared.
You already have the letter?
Or if they verbally agree, it's fine, yeah.
All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll see you next month.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is application, A23 3.1, 678 North Elm Street. David Vendetto?
Vendetto.
I'm sorry?
Vendetto, David Vendetto.
Vendetto. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay. Do you want to make a presentation, or do you want Erin to handle it?
It's tough act to call over there.
You go ahead, Dave.
Okay. I'm looking.
Please, could you identify yourself?
David Vendetto.
All right.
The owner of 678 North Elm Street.
Thank you.
So, Mike, Mike Gol and Erin and everybody, thank you for your time and consideration and everything, obviously. Some of you have been by my house already, and you could understand what I'm, what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying to make an area for my kids in the back that is, you know, playable and safe. My front yard is large, but it's on a busy street, unfortunately. There's a stop sign there, but that doesn't stop a lot of people from driving.
Pardon me, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I apologize.
Can you be slower?
Yes, absolutely. So, I'm looking to install a retaining wall in the backyard to make a more level yard, a little more expansive for my kids to play, as well as safe for my kids to play. That's the ultimate goal here. I'm working with Mark Wilson from Rams and Son Excavating. He has a great reputation, I hear, for dealing with this type of work, especially around wetlands. You know, I would obviously want it done correctly, so I am working with him regarding Wall would, you know, be approximately 80 feet, 80 feet long, the, between three and five feet high, depending on the area, but it's mostly three feet. There's a five-foot section right in the middle where it dips. And then just looking to fill and put a fence on top of that around it to stop anybody from falling off. I mean, I'm trying to avoid what happened three weeks ago with my daughter, who, two-year-old who rolled down the hill and did sprain her ankle. She was in a boot for a week and a half, so I ultimately, I'm just looking for a place to play soccer with my daughters in a safe manner is what I'm trying to do.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
How are you going to install the fence on the brick wall or the block wall you're putting in? Where's the fence?
Either, depending on the type of block or our stone boulder, it would be either, if it's a block wall, it would be on top of the block. If it's a stone, I would be obviously taking the fence in and going on the grass area and going around.
So, it won't, the fence won't protrude past the wall?
No, no. It will not. No.
Debbie?
No, no questions.
Mike?
No questions.
No questions.
Jimmy?
Nothing at this time.
You have a string drawn on the back of your property?
Yes.
That's the wall, where the wall's going to go?
That's where, it won't go any further than, than that line.
Okay. My experience with a boulder wall is enormously difficult to do. It doesn't, unless you get something special, in the boulder category, they want to roll around. Blocks, I've used block myself, and I, I'm pretty happy with block.
Right. The easy block, is that like what you're, I mean, like a bigger block?
Like a mafia block, decorated mafia block.
Right.
With a texture on one side.
Right, right.
And as, as the report, as Erin's report brought out, that when that house was built, it looks like that contractor did a little overzealous with his bulldozer in the wetland area, as well as, when you match your property to your neighbor, that was, of course, the original terrain.
Right.
What I did see, though, that I'm concerned about is grass clippings, and it looks like the grass clippings are over in the wetlands. That is a no-no.
Okay.
So, where I don't have a lot of problem with the fence and the block, because the damage that's been done, it was not done by you.
Right.
But I am concerned about any future damage going into grass clippings.
Hundred percent.
So.
On behalf of my landscaper, I apologize for that. I do not cut my own lawn, so I'm going to apologize for that myself, and I will speak to him as soon as we.
Erin, comments?
The environmental planners' report went out in your packet, which you got Friday night. It's a very small lot, relatively small lot, and a very small project, but sometimes the smaller ones take the longest to describe, as this was. Lot, lot going on on this little stretch behind his house there. I don't know how many of you got out there to see it, but it's the kind of thing, when you're standing there, you go, oh, I get it. The photographs don't do it justice, really. Everything that was said, I agree with. The drawing that David was describing is attached to his original application, which you got the month before. Has a detailed drawing of it. I had a bunch of pictures, and I annotated them to help you understand exactly how things are today and how they would be if this block wall is built and then the fill behind the block wall. Okay. So, the last page of my report, page four, excuse me, it'd be on page three, I lay out the different considerations. This commission typically would not approve the extension of a residential yard through the filling of an area that would be so close to wetlands. I mean, I can, you know, we get a flood of applications if, if we did this routinely. So, I lay out why this, this particular setting is different, why this particular address, this particular setting is different from some other ones that might be coming in here asking to do the same. But the wetlands is like that each one, each application has to be taken on its own merits, and that's what we do here. So, I don't know, Chairman, if you want me to go through the different things. Essentially, the biggest thing is what the one you mentioned, it was filled before by the developer. So, essentially, you're putting fill on top of fill. In a nutshell, that's, that's what's different about this one, perhaps.
Well, this is the one, Erin, though, I, I think I got a bone, I don't agree with, you're representing the water course behind this gentleman's property as being Patton's brook.
Oh, it's, no, I'm sorry. Oh, it's, no, I'm sorry, is it?
It's not Patton's Brook, it's really unnamed.
Oh, okay.
So, but you made a dozen, three, four, or five references as Patton's Brook.
I guess the one at Willow's up above, that's Patton's.
This doesn't go to Willow's.
Right, so the one, the property above, the patents will go off, yes, I stand corrected. Stand corrected.
This, this goes across the street and goes to Stigus Drive. This doesn't have anything to do with Willow's.
It's not Catlin Brook either. It's unnamed.
It's, no, Catlin Brook goes down along East Main Street.
Right, to the Choates Cemetery.
Starts at Ice Pond and comes across.
All right. I, I'll make that correction in the file. Yeah.
So make it in the file that this is not Patton's Brook. I'm going to call it Peterson's Brook. It was the previous owner.
Should I call it that, or unnamed? Unnamed.
Either one.
Sir, if I may as well, the, as far as the water level, with all the crazy rain we've had in the past three years, the torrential downpours, it has never risen. There's like a.
It's got quite a pitch running down through.
An opening on the other side of the axis of whorful that really goes off, so when it goes to a certain point, it just goes off the other side there.
Well, there's, there's a lot of changes that went in there. The cement pond that's no longer there, and I didn't realize until I went into your property and saw the cement pond that was a swimming pool.
Right.
For the, for the, the orig, one of the owners, Cecil Williams, that's gone. That's been destroyed. All that's gone. All that has really changed.
That was a swimming pool?
If you really get into it, the road went from Grebe Road down right behind your property, right diagonally across, came back up into Barnes Road, and then down and, well, went to Tankwood Road, which is no longer there.
Interesting.
But the original road went down there. If you look closely, you can see it.
Really?
But you gotta, you gotta know, look. All right. So, anyway, the, the. I thought, Aaron, you had some diagrams showing the height of the block wall. I don't know, have you got, have you done site, transit sites?
Yeah, the, both, both sides are around three feet. It's that middle section, it just dips, it's about, it's about five feet, right in the middle. And that's only about like a ten-foot section, but the rest is around, you know, three feet mostly.
All right. So in other words, okay. In other words, commissioners, no other questions? So be it. A call for a, a motion regarding the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-three dash three point one, six seventy-eight North Elm Street, David Vendetto, wall fill, topsoil, et cetera, be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-three dash three point one, six seventy-eight North Elm Street, David Vendetto, wall fill, topsoil, pipe and fencing, be approved with the recommendations of, on the environmental planners' report of April twenty-eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. You're in agreement with all the recommendations that was given to you in her, her report?
Yes, and I'll put as many placards as you want.
Okay. Call for a vote. Motion made second, call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Going under new business, application A sixteen, four point three, one oh three, North Colony Road, Joe Ricello, he wants a, oh, North Turnpike, I'm sorry, thanks, Nick. Joe Ricello requests for a bond release. Oh, my, Aaron?
This request came in, I guess, late last week, I guess. I want to pass out some photographs. I went out there yesterday with Mr. Ricello. I've been working with him for, oh gosh, eight years now on this site. The approval was given about six years ago. For those maybe members who are not, weren't here when it was approved, this was approved about six years ago. It's an affordable housing complex. It's a apartment building with three floors, and we, we saw a lot of history on this site before Mr. Ricello bought it. But here it is, and he's been working it himself. That's why it's moved slowly, and then he had some health issues. And anyway, here we are today, and he has started excavating the, for the building, and some of the, whenever I drive by, I see piles, small piles of fill, different ones move around there, always move around. And now they're, it's from the excavation of the, of the, for the building. But in the past, fill had been, I believe, had been brought in. Anyway, so he is adamant, he wants his bond reduced, and I went out there, took the pictures. There is one, I think it's the third page of pictures is concerning. It was erosion, because he didn't have silt fence on that side, which is the street side facing North Turnpike. He didn't have a silt fence, and with all the rain we've been having, so it eroded. But other than that, I didn't see any erosion, and he probably, if I go there today, there's a silt fence there. He gets on things very quickly. He did come, oh gosh, last week, and got the placards and put them all up. There's two missing in the front, but other than that, he's got it, or maybe three missing right on one side in the front, but he's got them up. So I have no issues with that, so why, we have a thirty thousand dollar bond, okay. So why would we hold it back, the two, or any of it, portion of it back? And I'm recommending releasing half of it. Why would we hold any of it back? Is there's two planting restorations that he has yet to do in wetlands. They're about thirty feet by a hundred feet. So there's two different ones by the stream toward where Little Italy was on that, that stream, that small stream that runs through there. The other's in the, in the back, near the sewer easement. The town has a sewer easement that runs through there. So he wants to do both of them at once toward the end, when he's doing the other plantings around the building, and I have no issue with that, as long as he gets them done. He's looking at deer exclusions, because the deer will just have a feel they eat in that, so, so that's good. He wants to protect the planting. So, that's one reason to hold the money back. The other reason is, as you can see from the picture, the site is open up, but it's level. The dirt really is not going anywhere if we do have a, an erosion issue, but the one thing I'm concerned about is a flood. If we have a big storm, and we haven't had one in like five years, that, but I've seen, you know, I've seen this place underwater, so that's what one of the concerns would be, a contingency for, if we are flooding, then there would be some erosion that would have to be dealt with. So that's, that's my report.
Okay. Comments, commissioners? Nick?
Aaron, is all the sub-piping done from the, it's sewer easement in the rear to the east? Is all the pipe, underground piping been brought into the foundation, and all the sub, sub-piping has been done on the lot?
Is anyone here representing this? I'm not sure of the answer. I know, I know he, he did put in a sewer line. I don't know if it's connected to the building, though. I saw it came in in the back. I don't know how close to the building it is.
Well, he's got piles of fill out there. I see some erosion on the pitches you just passed out. If, for some reason, he sells it to somebody else, we have no recourse if there's major erosion out there. So I'm not comfortable giving him back the, the bond until the work is completed. The building's not up, there's, there's a, there's a footprint where the foundation's going to sit. The lot's not stable. So I don't know why you want to give him back the bond, and we have no recourse. If he sells the property to somebody else to build the building, we have no recourse on, on the erosion and soil control.
That's a good point. I, I guess I was swayed by the fact that so much of the site is done. Basically, it's all done except for the building and the pavement.
If it's been done, why are the piles stockpiled out there? He's got sandy piles, he's got fill piles.
Oh, that's all from the excavation for the building. So he's, he's, all he has to do now is the building and the pavement.
There was no excavation for the building. He had to bring fill in to raise, to bring the lot up to the building. Do you remember when we approved it?
Well, he's excavating for the basement.
There should be no basement.
Well, something goes down ten feet. I don't know. Eight feet.
There you go. What's going to happen, you give him back his bond, and he digs the basement out. Where's, what's going to control where the fill goes? There's just too many loose ends here.
Oh, I know. He's, it's coming back to me. He said he was putting in the footings, and then he takes the dirt and put it back in the middle, but he's got the footing set around the edge. That's what, that's what it was. I apologize.
Well, I'm just not comfortable with, the project's not even halfway done here, and you want to give him back his bond. I'm just one voice, so I don't know how anybody else.
No, you make some good points.
Has anybody else been out there to see the lot?
Deb?
No, I've driven by, but not really seen all that.
Mike?
I agree with Commissioner Kern.
Jeff?
I can't hear.
No.
She didn't hear you.
Mr. Crusoe?
I agree with Commissioner Kern.
I don't understand.
Agree with Commissioner Kern.
All right. Thank you.
Same here.
I agree with him.
That's another agree.
Okay. Mr. Nekio?
Jimmy?
I agree.
Ally?
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, everybody agree? I, I think you've got to come up with a better solution. The foundation's not in, right? Is that correct?
Right.
I think we'll hold off unless something else changes.
He's got to put the sewer line in.
You got sewer line, you got a lot of, a lot of underground work to do, so. All right, so we're going to pass on that one. Okay. Application, receipt of new applications. A twenty-three, four point one, twenty-eight Cook Road, Vincenzo Capasso, tree removal for a barn. I went over this with Aaron. It's a simple barn for equipment. He claims there's not going to be any electricity brought to it, so we granted Amer, administration approval on some tree removal for the barn. Okay. A twenty-three, five point one, North Branford Road, four fifteen North Branford LLC. This is a new application. Is this Lehman gun site, or is this the Blue Trail Range?
It's above, yeah. It's above the gun site, but it's, it's, the owner is associated with this. Yes.
Okay, so that's a new application we just received. Eight twenty-three, five point two, sixty-nine Schoolhouse Road, Matt Luis. Now, I, why don't you come up, Matt? Let's see if we can take care of you in conjunction with the violation that's going on, because we're going to move into violation shortly. All right, Aaron. We have a, a, what do you want me to call, we got an outline that, that should be discussed for the issues up there, but this outline does not tend to sixty-nine Schoolhouse, correct?
Correct, correct. I'll, I'll, sixty-seven. This is not.
I can walk you through what to do with this one.
Sixty, sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine.
The outline is sixty-seven. That's the problem. This is sixty-nine we're dealing with. Okay?
What is that?
What the chairman is saying, we're, we're going to get into a longer discussion with a cease and desist, but Mr. Luis does not have a cease and desist. We're going to have a cease and desist hearing later.
Okay.
On sixty-seven.
All right. So, he had a violation, he has addressed the violation, and he's got an application to do what? Just give us a little brief, brief synopsis of what's going on.
Matt Luis here. Is it, is it working?
Why don't you use the other microphone? There you go.
Matt Luis, sixty-nine Schoolhouse Road. Yeah, so basically, I, I wasn't going to put the application right away because I was a little worried that I wasn't going to be able to have the bricks out in time, but Aaron said, called me, and she said, you know, "Put it in," because I told her, you know, "He's going to come, he's doing it, he said he's doing it," so, and sure enough, he did it before, you know, he did it, finished it today. But basically, the application is to bring in about thirty to thirty-five yards of topsoil, basically just spread it in the upland review area as we identified, and, I mean, that basically amounts to like one to three inches spread. I mean, obviously, I can't say it's going to be two or three inches perfectly, because, I mean, that'd be like sprinkling salt on where it's going to go. But basically, just enough to clean up, clean up the mess and plant some grass.
All right. You, have you got any issues with this, Aaron?
Well, first off, let me, let me just back it up a little bit. He applied, Matt applied yesterday, so we're not going to act on his application tonight. He's given you a little preview of, you know, the application that just came in yesterday, right? Did, did you hand out this? No?
Yep.
Oh, you did, so the commission has this?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So, so what to do? So, at the next meeting, you would approve, if you feel like approving, this new application. So.
But here's, here's the application, and you've talked, discussed with them. You don't have any issues with this application.
I haven't been out there to, to see that the bricks have been removed, and I'm going to go out there and look to see where the, he wants to put the topsoil, and to look at the photographs and see how many, how much plants and trees were removed in his violation, you know, when he cleared his backyard. So then I thought the commission might want to request that he plant X amount of shrubs or trees, or not, you know, just grass or whatever.
Yeah, and I, and I put that in my application. I mean, I'm more than willing to put some erosion plants around the new identified wetland area. You know, Sigranad gave me a bunch of options of plants that are great, that'll clean up erosion. I mean, obviously, there were some shrubs there before, but I'll put as much as I need to. I mean, I, I actually saved two blueberry bushes that were in that area. I actually dug them out, and I saved them. I have them in pots, so those will probably go back where they were.
Okay. Now, how does all this affect his violation?
Right, so we can skip down on the agenda to his, the violations on his property, if you'd like to do that. How, would it do, it'd be the remediation of it. It would, it would, he would ultimately, let's say in June, get his violation lifted.
So, tonight, we can lift his violation? Is that what you said?
I would like to see it remain. I haven't been out there. You could lift it if you wanted to. Actually, you could lift it if you wanted to. He has proved, he's shown that all the bricks are removed, so yes, I guess you could lift it if you wanted to. I don't see any erosion controls. Maybe you could, you know, have him put erosion, some erosion controls in. I mean, I haven't looked at it.
Aaron, how, how could you be out at sixty-seven with the incident that happened this past week and not look over at sixty-nine, which is right next door?
I think.
We can see it on the print here that he provided us tonight. He's got sixty-seven with the, the property line running down the edge, and here's, you've got sixty-seven and sixty-nine are basically the same lot area. You're telling me you were out there on sixty-seven with the commotion that happened there, but you didn't look over at sixty-nine?
Well, at that point, the bricks were still there. He just got them taken out with it today.
Yeah, he finished today. Yeah, he started on Monday.
You can lift the, I can under, I can see where you're going with this. You can lift the violation if you'd like to do that, and then, but I would like you to wait till June to approve the, the new work.
Okay. All right. You okay? I would like to lift the violation out of good faith of the work that this man did to correct the violation to begin with. So, we need a motion from the commission?
And that would be number, item number nine. This, I want to clarify, that's, that's under violations, it would be violation number nine that we are now discussing.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice violation on sixty-nine Schoolhouse Road, Matthew Luis, it's number nine on our violation list, be lifted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made. Any discussion?
It's nine and ten.
I'll take one at a time. Okay. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Now, at the same time, don't run away. At the same time, Aaron, does this lift number ten in the violation category, little case?
Okay, that's, no, it doesn't, because that violation was given to the contractor. How, however, maybe Matt can clarify.
There's no more violation, though.
What, what, what did Carl exactly do? I know he dumped some bricks right in your yard, in a pile?
Yeah, that was, it was just dropped, it was. Yeah, that was just dropped... It was dropped off.
Okay, he didn't spread them or...
No, yeah.
Okay, so that is... I mean, that's all Carl did on his property, and now the bricks are gone, so I don't know if you wanna pursue that one or not with Mr... With the contractor separately. It wouldn't be tied to... It'd be separate.
Are those bricks gone?
Yeah, they're gone. I mean, if I told you, like, there's some broken ones in my dirt that I need to rake out, there definitely is, but, I mean, I haven't gotten there yet.
They're gone? So, you're not gonna get Little K's back to pick up a few broken bricks?
No, that's what I'm saying. That, I'm not terribly excited about that one, so...
So that can be gone too?
Sorry?
That can be gone also?
Correct, because he got somebody else to take the bricks out. So it's Mr. Kaiser's lucky day on that one.
I'll entertain a motion to lift number 10 on the notice of violation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on number 10, notice of violation, 69 Schoolhouse Road, be lifted.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, both listed. Lifted. I think that's it.
Just a quick question on... So for June, so I saw like another application. You guys did like administrative approval to like remove a tree, and you guys granted it. Is there any option for something like that? Just because... I'm only asking just because, obviously, by the time I get to June, it'll start getting pretty hot to plant grass, so I'm... More ideal time would probably be in May. So that's the only reason why I'm asking.
Okay. Do you wanna plant grass before June? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if I could. I mean, obviously, I know you guys aren't gonna...
Okay, that's okay, but what is it to do with the administration approval on the tree removal?
Oh, no, I was just using it as a reference. So like, I wanna bring in the topsoil, obviously, in the upland review area. So if Erin comes out, you know, before the meeting and checks out the area and says, you know, looks good, could I have like an okay in between now in the meeting, or do I have to strictly wait until the meeting?
No, I would say you can do it now, because the whole purpose of correcting the violation is to get the thing reseeded and stable and all that stuff. So you would be ahead of the curve in doing it. Planted under her discretion. What, Erin?
I would say yes, an administrative approval halfway through in a week or two. Is that what you're thinking about? Would be... In other words, if I go out and I get what's going on there, that I could then say, would you like to do... To you, Chairman, because you have the certification to do that, to approve it administratively. But I don't feel comfortable. I haven't been out there to see what...
Approve planting grass? You want administration approval for him to plant grass?
For him to deposit topsoil. I just don't know where the line is. I don't... I don't recall. I would... Also, we don't get plants, but that's fine. If you wanna approve it tonight, then we...
What is correcting a violation is, unless he cricks it and makes it the end result, is what we usually ask for.
People usually get permits to fill, to put topsoil, to remove plantings and shrubs and put down topsoil in their upland review area.
Was there a plan on the correction of the violation? Was there a direction? Was there a plan? Was it to remove the brick and that was the end of the violation?
No. No, we gave no direction.
We gave him no direction?
No.
So he's taken the direction of remove the brick, move the violation, and reseed his lawn, and you think he needs a permit to reseed his lawn?
Would you like to throw in a few plants with it, though?
Well, topsoil.
Thirty yards is... Say, thirty yards of topsoil is nothing.
It's nothing. Like you said, two to four inches, if you shake it out with a salt shaker.
If you'd like... I would go along with it if you'd like. Then you'd have to not, you know, not receive this application tonight. Just call it remediation.
No, we're not proceeding with this application.
Not receive it. Just call it a remediation. The work he wants to do, you can term a remediation of the violation. And I would personally like you to throw in some plantings, but... Or not.
Is that an answer for you?
No.
Kinda.
Alright, Erin. Come on, Erin. We got one of the better violators here that's working with us to get this thing resolved. I would think we'd wanna work with him to get a lawn in before the heat of the summer. So how do you suggest doing that?
I... You could suggest you could go backwards and take away the... To rescind the lifting of the notice of violation and issue a different directive under that notice of violation, saying, hey, you haven't remediated. If you remediate by putting in three inches of topsoil and grass and whatever, 10 bushes, we... It will be lifted, or something like that, and we will lift it in June. But you do the work now between now and June. You show me the pictures in June, and we lift it in June.
Okay. How's the commission like that idea?
Can we just approve this application now?
No, we didn't approve the application. We approved lifting the violation.
But can we do that?
So now she wants to rescind the approval of the lifting of the violation and create a new motion to say the remediation of this site, you need to bring in topsoil and seed.
Seems too complicated.
How's everybody feel?
Confused.
Yeah. It's confusing.
The other option is what Matt was suggesting. Halfway through June, like in a week or two, I go out there and I suggest to... I come back to the office, suggest to you, Chairman, that you give him administrative approval for this application that's in front of you.
Okay.
That's fine.
Alright. Everything's gonna stay like it is?
Okay.
You're gonna get Erin out there. Sooner the better. And as you're moving along, she'll contact me and say, look, they wanna spread topsoil and seed. And chances... I don't see any reason why you won't get administration approval to do that when you're ready. Tomorrow, the next day, Friday, you know, whatever. And then you can proceed along. Now, just... Just... Get everything together before the Friday meeting before... Or Friday before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, I only...
Bring it in the night.
I only submitted today just because he literally took it out today, and, you know, that's why I did it.
You're doing okay. That's fine. Okay?
Okay.
Alright. Alright, let's get back to where we're going here. Alright.
I apologize about the elections. Once again, I failed to take out the agenda item called elections. We've already done that. I am sorry.
Okay, we're going on to violations. And the bulk of the violations is on a different property than we just took care of, and I'm going to number 11, notice of violation, 24 Maplewood Road, Patricia Clark.
Mapleview. Mapleview.
Mapleview Road.
Good morning.
Close. We've been here that late.
I had typed up a letter for you. I don't know if you want me to give it to you just in response to this. If you folks could speak up, please.
Okay, there's a violation on your property.
Mm-hmm.
And Erin, do you wanna discuss what the violation is?
Sure, sure. Um, let's see. I got a tip that something was going on out there, so I went out on April 13th, and there was work being done on the pool. It wasn't a wetland violation, or it wasn't even an upland review violation, but there were men there doing a trench and putting gravel in a trench. Apparently, Mrs. Clark said that they were... The pool liner keeps unfailing or whatever, and they're putting in some drainage work around the pool. That's on the west side. Alright, but when I'm out there, I notice other stuff going on. So we walk, she walks, and we walk down the backyard, and I see all sorts of violations, but compared to the other ones we're dealing with, they're small. I will say they are small violations. One thing about this site, though, is we have been out there before. Now, I don't know how many of the commissioners were on the board, oh gosh, 10 years ago or so, when we went out there. There was issues between this neighbor and the neighbor to the north. The town engineer was out there a few times. It was Rob Balschamitis at the time. And all sorts of things about drainage problems and a little bit of filling at that time. So, Mrs. Clark knew, I mean, she was well aware of the... Of the previous violations and issues and what the proper procedure was. But, you know, she does, as with a lot of people, they don't want a wet yard. And we hear this over and over again, but I don't want a wet yard. Okay. This... The good news about this... These properties that come together, there's four properties that come together, is that all that water wants to go to one of the properties. That's the good news. That's where it used to go before the developer did this subdivision. That's where it wants to go today. So ultimately, I think it'll all work out if everybody just agrees to let the water go there. And if Mrs. Clark stays off that property, that property is not, that I'm referring to, has a marsh. I sent out the environmental planners report. I'm sorry. The notice of violation went out in your Friday night packet. That undeveloped property next door, which, let me get the address right, is called 26 Mapleview Road. I'm sorry. It was sent to the owners, which live at 26 Mapleview Road. The actual undeveloped marsh property, marsh and wetland property, is 13 Rolling Meadow Drive, the marsh area. So when you look in this picture on the back, and it shows this marsh, that's not Mrs. Clark's property. That's the property next door that she has done work in. So, you know, it's a double problem. It's encroaching on someone else's property, and then it's a well and violation. So... But then she's done some minor work on her property. All of these things that are in the letter are easily fixable. She's just gotta agree to fix them. It's not a horrendous amount of work, and I think it could be resolved with everybody sending the water to this marsh, which is where it was supposed to go originally. I mean, it's where it should go. And... But these quote-unquote improvements, things, gravel, pipes, and digging a sinuous channel through the marsh in the attempt to get it flowing, you know, you can't do that without a permit. And if anyone's gonna come in for a permit, it has to be the owner of that marsh, not Mrs. Clark. So, there's a host of things going on here. Now, I don't know if you wanna do a site walk out there to see what they are.
Of course they would.
Or they're pretty clear from the photographs. Maybe, and I'm sure the Clarks wanna speak, but maybe the first one is the easiest... We do need to talk about that. This is the stone berm. It's not real high. It's just a little stone berm between her property and the one to the north.
Okay, this property is between her... This berm is between her and the property to the north?
Which is 11.
But you said the property to the north is the one that's been impacted by this. Because the 11 to the north doesn't flow across this. Is this berm put up? How does this picture and stone berm affect 11?
Alright. How... I wanna ask folks, how many of you got the assessor's image attached to this? Because I did do an assessor's image. Do you just... Four copies. Do you get a drawing by the assessor on this or not? It shows how the four properties come together. Did anyone get that?
No. Nope.
Give me a second. Okay, I'm sorry. I don't have the... I did the drawing. I don't have it tonight. It was... It's mentioned in the notice violation, and it's meant to be included, and I apologize. What it shows is to show everybody how these four properties come together. So the 11 Rolling Hill is to the north of their property.
But that, as I recall, the previous violation or the previous issues was there was blockage of water coming off of 11 down to this one?
Yes, yes.
Is it still... Is there still a blockage of water?
That owner called me, and she said it's minor. Yes, minor.
What do you mean by minor? Is it blockage, or there isn't blockage?
She said there is more water in that lower corner than used to be, is how she phrased it. Now, we are getting more rain than we used to get, but the Clarks did add some more gravel over there, so, you know, who knows how much is what?
Well...
And this is in the wetland... Wetland slash... I'd have to get a soil scientist out there to decide exactly where the wetland line stops and the upland review area starts. But to put gravel in that berm, you need a wet... A permit from this agency to do that.
Can you explain to him how much gravel is in the berm?
First of all, that's to stop erosion from them.
This is... This has been going on for like 30 years.
Use the microphone, please.
Since 1999.
Been going on for about 30 years.
I have plenty of pictures all through the years.
But the water always flowed from there onto you, and it's still...
No, 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 no.
It's still does.
In 99, they elevated their land about six to eight feet, and I have pictures of pipes that they have from their gutters, from their yard, from their backwash, piped into our yard. Our yard used to be dry. It all used to go to the natural flow. But they caused a change, and I have pictures of their yard when Louis Perone owned it, and it looks nothing like it did now, and it was soaking wet. So they created a problem for us. We're trying to divert the water to the side, but it's such an amount of water that it's a lot of water, and we can't handle it. So that's why there's another pipe that was put in in 2000 after their pool. The original pipe was from our builders before we bought the house in 86. So, I mean, I'd like to address everything that she said, because it's way... I'd like you to come to see it.
Yeah, if you came to see it, it'd be simple to explain. I don't... Where she's going. Well, I... There's no change.
There's no trench.
There's no blockage. There's nothing.
The trench is because their water eroded. Our bushes are... The roots are... Sorry, the roots are all exposed. Bushes have died, trees have died, and I'm trying to divert that water.
Without a permit?
Well, it's...
Without a permit?
It's on our yard. They have gravel. They have gravel on the other side.
Without a permit?
And do they have a permit?
Well, what... Did you call and say these people are doing this without a permit?
She's been here many times.
She's been there.
She's not a...
We have a history.
We're going nowhere.
I know.
Exactly.
That's why I'd rather you come to see the lot.
Well, if we can make an appointment, you come on to see it, you could see the way things are, and it'd be easy to explain. That's a simple way to do it.
It's...
You can't... First of all, it's illegal, and you have it in your letter, that it's illegal to cause... Where is it now? It's illegal to create changes in drainage such that certain areas become wetter. Well, that happened to us, and we're trying to alleviate the problem. The reason they're upset is because they did it to damage our property, and they don't want us to alleviate the problem.
You know, that's... Now you're going down a slope.
Well, that's what it looks like, and it's been that way since 1999. And I'm sorry, but you wouldn't like this happening to yours either, because we didn't have a problem before. Now we have a problem, and you're saying that we can't do anything to fix it?
Not without a permit.
It's not... Well, we can get a permit for the gravel, but that gravel is over rocks that's been there for at least 10 years, and she's been there plenty of times before. The pipes have been there since 86. That little rock wall that she was talking about's been there since 1987. There's been plenty of times when people, back when Brent Smith was here, that they were at our property. And that trench, it wasn't a trench until they... That water flow of theirs, because it still goes over that berm. That berm doesn't stop that water. It comes over there freely, and it pushes all the dirt on our side, and then it makes this trench where everything's exposed. So what are we supposed to do with it?
I think if someone came over and looked at it, it'd be easier to explain.
We're not stopping their flow. She's right. There was a tremendous amount of water this... In the past month, but we're not stopping their flow. I have pictures of our drain trying... At their place, they have rocks coming down, and then they have a hole where it comes into our yard. And we left that hole open to try to get it to go to... And we left that hole open to try to get it to go to the side.
Can I put a drain here to alleviate that?
We didn't block anything from that.
Listen, one person talks at a time.
No, we didn't block anything on that side. There's nothing blocked. If it was saturated, it's because of their pipes pushing down the water sitting in one place.
I don't think I remember it that way, but that's a long time ago.
Yeah, well, I have photographs even before the pipes were-
What's the commission want to do? Does the commission want to go look at this mess?
Yeah.
Okay? Let's pick a date.
Mr. Chairman, I would think if there was seriously six-feet change in elevation, there's got to be some kind of a record that would show that elevation change from the original contractor now.
Plenty in photographs.
If that is the case, I would think they would want to pursue that in court of law.
We might.
I would imagine that there is a record of it for the building permit when they added the pool at 11 Rolling Meadow.
There's a reason why the predecessor was fired.
Do we want to go out and visit it?
So, since I didn't have the, I didn't have the assessor's map, so I pulled it up on GPS. So I'm looking at the satellite here. So the waters, what Mrs. Clark is saying is the water from this site is pushing onto her site, this is her house, when it used to just go down here, it used to settle in between all of these houses, and then it ends up in this marshy area, which is what Erin was talking about. So they, I mean, you can see the color of their grass, looks like it's spray painted from the air, when everybody else has got like, you know, summer dry off. And that water's not flowing this way, it's flowing this way. It'd be interesting to see on the ground, yeah.
Pick a date.
What does people want to do? Is it five o'clock date? Does that work for everybody? What day of the week? Anybody got a particular day?
How soon do they want to go?
I would think sooner the better.
Next week, any day but Wednesday is fine for me.
Wednesday the 10th?
No, any day but Wednesday.
Oh, any day but Wednesday.
Monday or Tuesday work for me.
Tuesday the 9th? Tuesday the 9th?
Sure.
Tuesday the 9th at Mapleview. I forgot what number.
Can I?
24 Mapleview.
Mr. Chairman, can you do, can you set a special meeting, say it out loud, to set, for the record, you're going to-
We're going to set a special meeting for a site investigation on May 9th, 5 o'clock, on 24 Mapleview.
Do we want to, should I alert other property owners or just stick to this, these guys?
It's a violation, it should be on our property.
Well, you could-
Mrs. Clark, just stop. What was out here with about four properties on this letter of your-
Mrs. Clark, do you have, did your copy get the assessor's map?
Hey, Erin, talk to me.
No.
No, okay.
Erin, you had four or five people here.
Yeah.
Copy.
I had the old wetlands map, though. That was it.
So, why don't we at least notify those people? The immediate abutters to this, these two properties, property.
Okay.
Who else do you want to notify?
No, that's what I was thinking of, especially the people that own the marsh. I don't know.
No, but I would, I would say certainly the ones that are affected there. Okay. 5 o'clock on the 9th.
Okay, we appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, that's a disposition. Do you want to say that the notice of violation remains?
Notice of violation will remain in effect until the special meeting, and then you go from there. Okay, number 12, notice of violation, 19 Tamarack Swamp Road, William Schubert.
Good evening, Bill Schubert, owner of 19 Tamarack Swamp Road, thank you for your time. Sorry, I'm having some allergies, so.
No problem.
If you could speak clearly as well.
Say again?
As clearly as possible, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
As we know, Erin's been out to the site, you've done some filling apparently in a She said, though, you've been very cooperative to control it since you've talked with her. She also indicates that you have contacted Roman Samansky.
Yes, sir. And he gave me a to-do list so far, and I've done everything on that to-do list. He's out of town currently. When he gets back, he said he was going to revisit and come up with more for me to do, and I'm just waiting for him to come back.
Yeah. Here's the situation, it's filled, you filled the wetland, there was discussion about using for agricultural for raising some pigs.
So, sorry to interrupt.
That quite qualifies.
I, I thought that I was doing everything that I needed to, like, I had called and asked if I needed a permit for driveways and landscaping, and I was trying to accomplish several different tasks at the same time. But I, if, I had looked it up, I thought that it, I Googled Wallingford Town Code, what's required for pigs, and from what I read, it was three acres, and I think it was 200 feet from an occupied structure. Apparently, that was the wrong Wallingford, I guess, but, so, I had mentioned that to Erin, and she said that, basically, I can't do it at all, even if I was brainstorming, maybe I'd buy some of the land that's underneath the transmission lines at the back of the property to come up to five acres. But even that's not an option, because there'd be nowhere to go through. It's wetlands from the left side of the property to the right, so.
Well, I don't, I don't see there's much to deal with tonight until Roman comes back. So you've been so cooperative, and I think just staying along the same lines, and we'll see when Roman comes back.
Could I-
The notice of violation will stay in effect.
Can I say a few words? The notice of violation went out April, that you got in your packet, went out April 24th with all the pictures showing what was going on. I did email folks, saying if you get a chance, go out there. I know some of the commissioners did get a chance to go out there. Before they talk, I just want to say that on Friday, in your packet, I did do an environmental planners' report, and I would like to know if all of you got that?
I mean, I did.
Just can I say that, as I ended up with four extra copies, I'm like, how am I ending up with four extra copies? But everyone got that. Okay, that shows, the difference is, that shows the pictures with the erosion controls that I directed Mr. Schubert to put in, and he ran and put them in the next day. So that shows, that shows initiative. I was pleased with that. Since then, subsequent to that, Roman went out there and had them get, do more, like 100 more hay bales you bought?
It was, he suggested 70, I put in 80 so far.
Okay. He went and got 100 more hay bales from a farmer that Roman suggested. He put in, he took, did some of them, you ripped up and put around with straw mulch, like, for straw mulch, because Roman suggested it. And so I go through this in here, the steps, but I'm very happy that Mr. Rosinski, who's to be the executive director of the Southwest Conservation District, he's retired now, that he was available. He is away right now, but when he gets back, he's going to work with Mr. Schubert on the next step.
Okay. No, come on up.
Use the micro-
Use the, you got to use the microphone. And your name and address.
To the microphone.
Yes, my name is Joan Gomkowski.
Hang on a minute. Jimmy, can you make sure the microphone's on, please? And adjust it for-
Oh, thank you. I'm not used to one of these. I just wanted to make it clear.
Could you repeat the name again, please?
Joan Gomkowski. I live at 11 Tamarack Swamp Road. And I just wanted to clarify, I got a copy of the letter that was sent to Mr. Schubert in regard to his violations, and I wanted to make it clear that I had only given him permission to move a tree trunk for firewood. I didn't realize he was going to do some fill on my property at the same time. I'm kind of concerned about that. I don't know what to do from there. I didn't know if you could help me with that.
At this point, it's a little too early, but Erin should deal with it to identify exactly what you're referring to.
I'm, this-
You have that information?
Yes. When this all came down, I went up to the health department, because Mr. Schubert said, well, he just bought it like a year ago, but the previous owner just put in an engineered septic system. So I ran up to the health department, they had a survey of the property. So Mr. Schubert got lucky, we have a survey. So now, what I would like to, I waited till tonight to have the commission decide how much she should survey. In other words, we want that eastern property line surveyed for the reasons that Mrs. Gomkowski just expressed. We want, we want to know exactly where her line is, okay? So it was done once, but we want it staked in the field, he can use the same consulting, it's Connecticut's consulting engineers. They'll be happy to come out, they called me, they can come out and do that line. But while they're at it, do we want to wait and have them survey the whole deposition? Or, and this is hard to decide, but, or do we want Rowan Rosinski just to, you know, kind of approximate that on this survey map?
Well, you're talking about get a licensed surveyor out there now?
I don't want to-
Don't you refer to?
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be better to get them out there once and not twice.
Well, I don't know if you're a little premature. If she knows where her boundary is, if it's agreed a boundary line, it may not need a surveyor.
Okay.
Excuse me, I really don't know the boundary, because it's a 14-acre piece of property, and 11 acres or so of it is swamp.
Well, it's, it's not common practice to dump fill on somebody else's property without their permission.
Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, this is leading towards full fill removal. So you were nice enough to let him go in and get the firewood that he so inquired he needed. You did not give him permission to put the fill on your property, it's going to come back off the property. And this gentleman he hired to do the survey, technically, he can't come over on your property and say, leave the fill there. So the fill will be removed from your wetland area on your property.
Okay.
Okay? Does that help you with peace of mind?
Yes, and, you know, I, because in the letter, it said I had given him permission to do certain work, as well as remove the wood from a large downed tree, and that's not correct.
Okay.
Mr. Vitale, Chairman Vitale?
I saw no harm in just taking a tree that was down and, you know, being neighborly.
Right. And I believe our, Erin said she believes I crossed the property line by like 20 feet. I don't think it was nearly that much. I think it was like two or three feet. I think, but I don't, it was based off of existing ribbons and stuff.
It's a little hard for me to get out there, so I haven't had a chance to.
I understand. If you'd like to see it, I can.
Yes.
Okay. I'll let you know.
Okay. Oh, my God.
All right. This gentleman seemed to be cooperative, so let's hope for the best that everything works out.
All right, thank you.
You can contact Erin at the wetlands department, she should be able to keep you informed also.
I did want to say, you can see the tree, it's an enormous tree that fell down, that they're discussing, it's on this photograph, which is-
Yeah, but so what?
No, no, no. So it's, what the so what is, for him to go do it, he's going to drive through, it's going to make a mess in the wetlands. So I'm glad he didn't get that tree yet. I mean, I'm not saying it shouldn't someday be gotten, but there's a better way to do it if you're going to walk through a swamp to get a tree and haul it out. So that's, is another layer to this. But in answer to what I said before, should we wait on the survey until we know, or, let's talk about it, should, I mean, Roman's really good at doing estimations on maps.
May I?
Hang on a minute, go ahead, Ellen.
So when I was out, I was out there yesterday, and the iron poles, stakes are clearly visible, they're already flagged.
Have you marked them?
Yep, yep.
There you go.
So Roman, when he goes out there, can have an easy line with, you know, to draw one line from one pole to one stake to another stake. I don't think it's, I don't think it necessarily needs to be re-surveyed.
Do you know who put those stakes in there, Mr. Schubert?
I have not.
What's the map say?
Typically, typically, those stakes go in when they first subdivide a property. Like, when I had mine done before I built my shed, you know, the surveyor was out there with a metal detector and a little shovel, digging them up, you know, around all my neighbors' houses, because they were already there, and they had been put there in 1952 when they subdivided the pasture that became my street.
It might work, I don't, it might work if there's enough of them, we'll see.
They typically, they're typically on any angle. There's a corner marker right at wherever an angle changes, so, and I saw at least one of them when I was out there.
Oh, yeah, there's, I saw a bunch of them, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We'll be hearing from you, or you'll be hearing from us.
So the notice of violation remains?
That's what I said.
Okay, and, all, that was for the last one.
You're going to wait until Roman comes back.
Okay. Notice of violation remains, and, yes, Roman's coming back in about a week, I think, and then they're going to do the next phase. Should Roman start, having him remove material between, before the June 7th meeting, or just let it sit?
No, the sooner it comes out, I think, the better, because unfortunately, you're going to take it out. That's an unfortunate situation, but.
And you need to work with the lady on 11, Erin, to reassure her that the fill that's been brought on her property will be removed.
Why don't we put that in the order that you're going to do? The order, when you just said it remains, why don't we make an order that it remains, and the directive is to remove the fill from her property, and to start removing the fill with Mr., under Roman's direction?
That's fine. That's fine.
Yes.
Just want her, I want her to be reassured that, you know, it was only-
Oh, yes.
It was only firewood she gave him permission for, not putting fill on the property.
The only reason it's not done is I didn't know if I was allowed to do it, like, it's-
We'll get you through it. Okay? Everybody okay with this?
Yep.
You're all set, right for now. You all set?
You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now.
It's not so bad.
The next situation gets very technical. This is, this is coming from, from the aspect of the legal side of what we're doing here. This is in reference to 67 Schoolhouse Road, Michelle Milken and Michael Jurese. There was a cease and desist hearing tonight, which they chose not to attend. The cease and desist was because they were adding material to the brick pile. We got aware of it, Erin went up and stood her ground, and took on Little Kay's and a whole bunch of issue. Little Kay's was back there dumping more material on site. The cease and desist is also for Little Kay's at 67 Schoolhouse, because she, he was again putting material on the top. So, the notice of violation at 67 Schoolhouse Road goes to Carl Klisick, Klisick, contractor, and the, and not only 67, the homeowners, the notice violation remains, not only on the old violation, but the new violation. Now, this is where we're reviewing our orders and trying to get everything in- Now, this is where we're reviewing our orders and trying to get everything satisfactory to take legal action. Law Department can go on from here. So, Erin.
Okay. We are now... What we're talking about now are violation items number... You ready? Three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. And that sounds like a lot, but they overlap, all right?
There is a... There are a lot.
Am I right? Are you correcting me? Somebody correct me. Okay. So, let me review the orders. That's the steps we go through. So, now, I review the orders. All right. So, the first order was September 20th. That is the note of... The original notice of violation on this property was dated September 20th. It was sent by certified mail and served by state marshal. A copy to the owners and a copy to the contractor because under Wetland Act, you can do both. Okay. So, and that order pertained to the filling of their backyard approximately... At that time, it was characterized approximately 100 feet by 150 feet. They had cut down a forest in a swamp. Now, today, we know we refer to it as swamp. It is definitely a swamp. It's not a questionable wetland. It was a swamp. And then, after the cutting, they removed... They left the stumps, pretty much, and removed the wood and then filled it with up to three feet of a mixture of brick and earth, broken red bricks and earth. And that was the violation. And they got the notice. They came to the commission. The violation was discussed, and it remained, and the commission continued throughout the months to order it to remain. But in that period, they also had them explore options. They had them... Sigurin Gadwa was a hired wetland scientist to definitively determine the depth of the filling, to confirm the area of the wetland boundary, which she did. The map from 1978 was a little off, you know, and whatever, and probably the original developer filled more. So, she perfected that line. She established the depth. She did about 20 holes establishing the depth of this fill and so on. She also explored options going in the future of planting, lots of plantings to bring this thing back to a thriving swamp, which would have taken a lot amount of work. Anyway, so, bottom line, the commission on March 1st decided to have all the wetlands... To have the wetlands restored to their former elevation. So, they issued an order on March 1st to take off to the owner and separately to the contractor to take all the fill out of the wetlands and to take it off-site. In that order, there was another directive was that just that the notice of violation remains in place. So, then, that was in March. So, then, April, we affirmed it remains in place. Now, we are here in May. So, I got a tip that more filling was being conducted on April 18th. I went over there, and sure enough, it was in progress. And I said, "Stop. Stop." There were two workers. One was a young gentleman on a small bobcat-type thing. He had just spread the black, dark, very dark brown fill evenly in the back over the bricks to a depth of about three feet or anywhere from six inches to about three feet over there on the bricks. There were three discrete areas that was black material in the back. In the front, more toward the house, it was a rubbly, kind of gravelly, stony kind of material. And the third deposition was over on the east side, right up against the swamp and where they have the wood pile, and it was more like gravel, and I believe it was about a foot and a half thick. So, and I spell this out in the notice of violation that went out the next day on April 19th to the owners and April 20th to Carl Kaislich, former owner of Little Kay's Landscaping. In that order, it says that a cease and desist will be coming. Why I did that, why we do that is because under the... In the regulations, you have to hold a cease and desist within 10 days, and 10 days wouldn't have brought us till tonight. So, that bought us five days. So, after five days went by, I sent out the cease and desist order to both parties. That order went out on April 25th, and that order said, it was predicated on these orders, all of them stapled to the back, and it said, "You are hereby ordered to cease any further filling anywhere on your property to the rear of the house, and you are ordered to correct the condition by immediately removing the recent fill material off-site." And then, I specify the nature of the fill and where it's located on the property. And the third directive given to them was, "You are to appear at this commission meeting tonight. You will be provided an opportunity to be heard and to show cause why the cease and desist order should not remain in effect, and failure to carry out these actions will provide for further enforcement under section... Provided for in Section 14." All right. So, they did... And I also... That also was sent to the contractor. Neither party has contacted me, and they are not here tonight. So, if you could just bear with me a second. Now, I just want to emphasize that this current cease and desist that went out, in the letter, I said it pertains to the new filling because if you remember in March, they were given six months to take out the old fill. So, they still had about five months left on that order. So, that's when I realized that this was only about the new fill. However, because of all... I met with the Law Department and because of all the non-compliance and non-cooperation that's gone on, the order I'm going to be suggesting you do tonight would have pertained to all the fill. But we can get to that. We can get to that. At this point in the hearing, it would be the time for the owner and the contractor to speak, but they're not here. So, we're going to proceed to the next point in the hearing where, Mr. Chairman, you take over, and the commission... You walk the commission through making a finding, what's called a finding. It states what happens. It talks about their compliance or lack of compliance, and you state that they did nothing to comply with this cease and desist.
Okay. As you see, it doesn't look like we have a cooperative violator. The fact that adding additional material just kind of blows my mind. But the finding, or I think what the commission has got to decide is, and the findings that we're coming up with are the fact that they have willfully non-compliant with any of our directors. They not only ignored us, but they just went over and above to not do any of the requested directives in the cease and desist. I thought we were generous in the giving them six months to work with them. Apparently, they don't feel that way. They feel that they were going to continue filling and getting what their intention was to begin with. So, with the history that we're experienced with them, I think there's got to be new orders issued. I think the new orders should be rescinding the six-month privilege of retaining the... Removing the product and make it a directive that immediately this product should be removed. Now, we... There's a question on... Certainly, they can't get it out this week. The question is whether it's going to be 30 days or 60 days. I don't think it's going to make any difference if we wait 60 days. We're going to have a situation. We'll be back here having the same discussion. We might as well have it in 30 days. So, the... We have two parts of this new order. One is the owners are to remove all fill, new fill, old fill, brick, dirt, fill, with immediate inspection by Erin before any other activity occurs. And the second part of that order is to instruct the contractor to cease and desist any work on the property. Now, I have no idea if they're going to continue with this fellow or not. I don't know where he's going to... What equipment he has and what he's going to do. Now, I mean, the same order can go to the owners and can go to the contractor. That all fill is to be removed, including the old fill and the new fill. Now, I think we're going to... Do we have to rescind the other order, or this just supersedes the old book?
No, no. It was stated that it just supersedes.
It just...
Because of the flagrant disregard for the first order.
All right. So, we're going to remove all the fill, including the new fill, the old fill, and we've got to pick a day. My suggestion is 30 days. And this same order goes to the contractor as well as the homeowner, and it's got to be inspected by Erin before any other activity occurs, which... Now, when you mean any other activity, the activity of removal or after that?
Before any other activity occurs on-site, meaning, I don't know. I can't imagine... They might have other ideas, so we don't want any activity occurring behind the house. Obviously, they can plant bushes in the front of the house.
Well, you're going to get a motion tonight. Go ahead, Nick.
I'm not trying to throw a wrench into the fire here, but if I came over to your house, behind your house, and dumped some loads of fill on your property, doesn't the town see that the property owner is responsible for what goes on to his property? So, we keep going after this Little Kay or what used to be Little Kay's?
I think it's useless.
I don't even think it should happen because it's just going to add salty water to the process of them fixing the lot.
I don't know if the Law Department likes multiple people involved or not. What's the comment, Erin? Does Little Kay need to be in this... In the direct order or not?
That wasn't... Really, didn't... Wasn't discussed so much, but I think it would be perhaps, and we could talk about this, but an opportunity to show Little Kay, well, Carl Kaislich, that he can't just go around, do this all over our town of Wallingford, that it becomes a nuisance. So, I would hope there'd be some kind of mechanism to get him to stop defacing properties. Not defacing them, but...
Well, I would disagree with you there because this fellow doesn't seem to pay any more attention to directives than the homeowner. But I think if you went after... If you had Little Kay in this order, that might prevent any other contractors of doing similar, knowing that they're going to be part of this collective or cease and desist order.
I don't know if legally we could... Can legally you do that? I don't... I agree with you, Nick. You know, it's... It seems inappropriate to go after the people that someone else hired to do something. You've got to go after the people that instigated it from the beginning, the get-go.
That's true, but he did know from the previous violation that adding more fill was going to be against the rules.
Then, wouldn't you separate the two?
I... They are separated. There's two separate violation orders against each of them.
Okay.
Well, I...
I think it's going to weaken our...
Why don't we do this? How about this? We go after the homeowners, and if next month, we've got to after Little Kay's, we'll go after Little Kay's.
That's a good compromise.
Yeah.
Okay. 30 days? How's 30 days, son?
30 days. 30 days is sufficient.
Okay. So, with that, then, I'll entertain a motion with the new orders that all material, old and new, to be removed immediately, you know, be removed within 30 days and with Erin's immediate inspection before any activities go on. All right?
Yeah.
Is there a motion regarding this violation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding the violation of 67 Schoolhouse Road, that we will rescind the six-month allowance of removing fill and ask for the immediate removal of all fill within 30 days with the inspection by staff immediately before any activity occurs on the site. And...
Is there a motion made? Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion?
Who was the second, there?
Russo.
Russo?
Jeff Cruz.
Were you going to explain something?
Oh, yeah. I see someone's entered the auditorium, but I just...
Off for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Erin's trying to make a comment.
I thought Mrs. O'Hair was going to qualify something that pertained to the motion.
I was just going to say, and I was adding another part to the order, that they are ordered to appear before the commission at the June 7th meeting. That is a second part to that.
Do you repeat?
Well, if they like this suggestion, the second part of the order would be to appear before the commission on June 7th.
Okay. There's a motion made, and they're seconded. We have the gentleman here who's representing this order. I will allow him to speak if he wants to.
Well, my wife just...
Well, you know, we're ready to wind it up.
I... So, I heard online. You guys are all ready to make a motion to get the...
A motion made. There's a motion made right now for you to remove all fill, old and new, within 30 days.
Yeah. I contacted Carl from Little Kay's, and that's what I wanted, to have the fill removed. And he came in and started putting dirt down in the back.
Too many stories.
I know. Everything I say doesn't matter here.
Yeah. Unfortunate to you that our order, I think, stays in effect.
I didn't ask for a change on that. I asked my contractor to remove the material. He didn't do it. I guess that's my fault, even though I wasn't home.
Right.
So, I have to wait, have no job, do nothing, and just monitor this guy at all times? Or, I fire him, I guess. I don't know.
Do whatever you want. He works for you.
Right. But he stopped. I had a July timeframe initially to remove the material. It seems like you guys are just basically against me.
Oh, I don't think so.
You're not? Okay.
Off for a vote. You got anything to add, Erin?
I have a point of order, if you're ready.
I cannot hear you.
Talking to Mike.
I'm trying. I have a point of order. I believe the motion that is being made, that Mrs. Phillips is making, pertains only to Mr. Luis's property?
No, no, no.
Or both?
No. We're just on 67.
We're on 67.
And this is the owner of 67. Yeah, I said 67 Schoolhouse. That's right. His name is Mike Jerace.
But we're not making a motion about him?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. I said 67 Schoolhouse Road.
All right. I stand corrected. All right.
But the motion, you were going to... I think you're going to amend it to add the other one.
Add what?
To add that they are requested to appear... Ordered to appear at the June 7th meeting.
What's the addition? Everything you bounced the mic around. What's the addition?
Oh, that the owners are ordered to appear before the commission on June 7th.
Why?
I don't know. Just so they can tell us they removed the fill and everything is good or something, why they couldn't, or there was too much rain, or I don't know.
They're welcome to come on June 7th, but I'm not going to order them on June 7th.
No, that's...
That's fine.
So, the motion is made in the second. Any other discussion? Off for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All set. Okay. All right. Now, the tamarack swamp is done.
Re-explain, one second, what's going on?
You're in... There's an order in place now for you to remove all the material, old and new, in 30 days.
Okay. And if that doesn't happen?
We'll probably end up handing it over to the Law Department.
Okay.
Fine. Super. I got to contact the lawyer too, then. The...
Get two of them.
Did you talk to the Law Department about getting a... The violation on record, on land records?
No, I did not.
Will you make a little note of that?
Big note, yes. Yes, I will.
Okay. All right. Everything else seems to be the... Everything else seems to be the same. Nothing else has changed too much. Okay, there's, is, let's see, I had an idea with this new screen that the town has generously donated, or put up for us for up the commission, that Erin, if you could take some videos of these violations of sites?
Oh.
And get it up on the screen. Now, the question, I talked briefly with the guys in the TV studio over there, they suggest you talk to them specifically, and the question is a little fuzzy whether, I would like to see a video, but they think possibly the pictures would do the same job. We talked about a camera, they indicate your cell phone can do the job. So this is something to discuss with the boys in the, in the camera room.
We could have both, both photos and video.
Yes.
I mean, in theory.
Okay, so, I mean, it, pictures are one thing, excuse me. The only thing I hate to see is a camera going up, moving around as you walk, because I've done that myself, and it's not...
Yes.
Anything else to come before us tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposition. I was really...
Okay.
I was a little... My eyes...[1754.51]